All right, everyone. Thank you, everyone, to this special committee of the whole that we're having on December 3rd. I'll start off this agenda, I don't want to bring my agenda with me, so I don't have my notes, but I will go with by memory. It's what I've acknowledged to start with, that we are in the traditional territories of the coast and straight Salish peoples and the Lakhuangun speaking people, known today as the Squamaltan Songhe's First Nations, and that their connections to these lands continue to this day. I also want to point out to anybody in the audience that these proceedings will be recorded and livestreamed, so you will be heard outside of these walls. And with that, we're going to kick this off, and I'll just do a really quick preamble, and then we'll get straight to the meeting. This is a very unusual setup, as you can sort of tell, for those of you who have been in these walls before. The intention here was really to kind of give us a chance to have a little bit of an informal discussion around how we're going to guide our strategic planning process and our budgeting process in a way that would still be open to the public and transparent and allow for a bit of a fulsome conversation. So hopefully at the result, in the end of this, we'll have a very clear guidelines to our staff to guide what we're going to do in January for strategic planning and budgeting. And so I'm going to leave this to Ms. Varela, our CAO, for those of you watching at home, to guide us through this essentially facilitated process to talk a little bit about some of the options. Just from a timing standpoint, for those here, my hope is that we'll do this in around 90 minutes. It shouldn't be a long meeting. We're going to try and get to some clear things fairly quickly. At about the hour point, I'm going to invite the public up, and if there's any other ideas or thoughts that people have about ways of improving or things that we could do next year as part of this process, we're welcome to hear those. So for now, we're going to stick off and kick off and just have this discussion as a group. So Ms. Varela.
Thank you, your worship. It's always fun. I've never done a workshop with a mic in front of me before. I usually just get to yell really loud, so this is great. Thank you for everyone coming and participating tonight, both the gallery staff and the committee. Tonight's really about garnering your input for staff to go away and develop work plans. And we want to develop those work plans based on common expectations, understanding of constraints, and next steps in the budget process. And Debbie's really going to talk about some of the constraints that are happening in the department and really across the organization right now. So role of the facilitator. I'm going to take off my CAO hat somewhat tonight, and I'm really going to step up as a facilitator. So I might guide the conversation a little more than you usually would experience. Two tools that we've put forward tonight on the floor are the flip charts. We've got really high tech. So we're going to be taking staff direction. So what are the takeaways from tonight? And then if we start to go off into things that are going to be better happening at strategic planning, we're going to use the parking lot issue, because I think people are more comfortable tabling the conversation if they know we aren't going to lose the thought. So Deb's going to be flip charting away over there as we get going. So tonight, the goals of our workshop. So we want to achieve common understanding between staff and council on sort of three groupings. So what the current budget process is and where we are for 2019, and the constraints that we'll be dealing with. So those will include workload, legislated deadlines, things like that. We also want to talk about recommended enhancements for the 2019 budget process based on those understandings. And we want to make sure we are clear on what council's direction on recommended enhancements will be. And finally, we want to move into clarity and agreement on those next steps for the budget process, and we want to have a high-level discussion regarding strategic planning. So really, after tonight, staff will go away and we're going to start developing your strategic planning process with a framework, rather than just throwing those darts into the dark and hoping we hit your expectations with those. We'll move through this, and I'm going to hand this over to Debbie to talk about the current budget process.
Thank you, Lou. Pardon me. So at this time of the year, we're well out of the gate in terms of our budget process for the following year. We start typically in early August and September, when templates are provided to the directors, along with a memo indicating estimates for such things as utility rates, employer benefit costs, and things like that. And at that time, those are just estimates, because we don't get the final figures till a bit later. So directors were requested to return their completed budget templates in October. They're then assembled and reviewed. The police department budget is a bit of an anomaly. It's typically first to council due to requirements of the Police Act, and I believe that was on last week's agenda. The Parks, Rec, and Culture budgets are also reviewed by the commission at this time. And so that brings us to this point in time where we are now, November, December, when we prepare the water and sewer budgets for council consideration and rate bylaw adoption before year-end. So you'll be seeing those next week. Next steps after that, we fine-tune the budgets via management team review. Early approval of select capital budgets also come forward for approval in January, and that enables the district to go to market early in the year to maintain efficient operations. Pardon me, I'm losing my voice. So the five-year financial plan is prepared January through March. Things like employee benefit rates and the final CRD requisition numbers are known, or aren't known until the first quarter of the new year, so those can't be finalized in the budget until then. In March, staff also reviews year-end actual figures against proposed budget to identify any possible issues. And from the budget goes, from there, the budget goes through three days of estimates, estimates committee, where council reviews and the public has an opportunity to participate. Many of you have been through that process already. Adoption of the five-year financial plan must be adopted by May 15th each year, and that's a legislated timeline, so we don't have any wiggle room there. And then the annual, from there, the annual report for the district is prepared in June, and that includes a lot of financial information that comes from our final year-end audit. So as mentioned, these are target dates for adopting water and sewer rates to be effective January 1st of each year. They're incorporated into the five-year financial plan, which is due by May 15th, as I mentioned already. The strategic planning dates that you see there are tentative dates that will need to be discussed and scheduled with this group. And then, of course, the future budget process to be determined beyond June 2019. So workload challenges that we're facing, I won't read the list, you can read those on your own, but there's, it's important to note that we do face some significant workload challenges and timeline challenges. For example, you're already aware of the employer health tax implementation for 2019, which is new. And another item we've been made aware of are pending changes to the school tax system that will need to be implemented before tax notices go out in 2019. So you'll be hearing more about that. And we also have the entire fleet insurance renewals due by December 31st as well. Our interim audit begins next week. KPMG will be here to do that, and our full year-end audit in March and preparation of year-end, et cetera. So there's a lot going on.
Thanks, Debbie. I sort of liken that exercise to when I was a little kid and this year's Christmas catalog would arrive, and I'd start to pick things I wanted, but my parents always reminded me there were actually constraints, like, you know, household incomes and things like that. So I think as we move forward with the discussion of timing and expectations, it's important to have that kind of foundational understanding, and Debbie's happy to answer more questions about that. So with that in mind, staff discussed about what we might possibly do to enhance the budget process that we're already midstream on. And these are the things that staff has came up with, and we want to put those on the table for your discussion and consideration, and to see if we were missing anything that could be doable in 2019. So staff talked about enhanced advertising for the estimates meetings, perhaps some more visual components for the budget, moving away from a more Excel approach to something that actually is a little bit more visual. And again, that's an idea for progress, but if there's even some small steps we could take in that for this year, that might be worth it. We've also talked about a council staff workshop in January to help build out a calendar. So if we look at what council wants to achieve in basically the next three and a half years, if we get all of that on the table and we start to work backwards, we can have a discussion about what's achievable. You need to start deciding where you want staff to put their energy, where you're putting your budget dollars, things like that. And so we really see that as being deserving of special attention, and that's a new approach as well. And we're talking about, we've heard a lot about public engagement, and we have a sense that council strongly prioritizes that, and we're trying to say, well, what can we achieve for this year? And we talked about a special committee of the whole for public input on the draft budget, and Debbie would present that, and you'd be able to garner some input there. We were also talking about a public meeting for a corporate strategic plan. So one of the things that you have from previous council term is you had some strategic goals, but there really isn't a document that articulates your mission, values, or the philosophy piece of strategic planning. So we're thinking, if we got in there, did some workshopping, council got a product, then maybe we can bring that back to the public as well. So those are staff suggestions, and the ones with stars really represent a significant amount of work. And when you hear about what's already on everyone's plates, knowing where Parks and Rec are in their budget process, where the police are, those sorts of things, we're wondering what, if anything, we are missing that council would have as an expectation for the 2019 budget. And I'm just going to get you thinking about that, because we're going to come back in a recap and ask you to give us a bit more. And I've actually printed out this slide, because I think we'll use that as a visual. So Dan, do you mind handing that out to everybody around the table? And we can come back to that. But that's going to be one of the big questions tonight, is what are your expectations for 2019 budget? So when we talk about aligning expectations, a little bit of a cover piece is that we're hoping that we can get agreement that we recognize we're midstream for 2019. And given that we're midstream, given the constraints, we're not hoping to see significant change in the 2019 budget process. That'll be something council provides us direction on. We'd also like to plant the seed that just with the improvements or enhancements that we're talking about for this year, we're going to need to schedule additional special meetings than what's already in your usual calendar. So tonight's actually a new piece in that. It's a new approach. So we're starting off this new way of doing things on December 3rd, being here tonight. I'd like to have more of these workshop kind of discussions. But those calendar dates are going to be changing. On the table in front of you, there is somewhat more refined calendar than you were provided in the last, I think it was Committee of the Whole meeting, where we put out the draft calendar. This one's actually dated with a published date, so this one was published December 3rd, and so we're going to keep refining that as we move forward, selecting dates for strategic planning sessions, those sorts of things. And finally, for the budget process, we're hoping to hear from you what your clear direction is, because we don't want to miss the target, and so that's what you need to give us, is the target. So that's budget. And when we move into thinking about work plans for strategic planning, we're wondering if council would endorse sort of a three-pronged approach. So one would be the more philosophy piece that we talked about, that mission, values, vision, you know, there's all kinds of words you can throw in there, pillars, stuff like that. We also want to talk about that calendar, right? So your deliverables and outcomes you're looking for in that three and a half-year term, and how do we work that back, and how do we link it to the financial plan? And finally, I'd like to add in a third component, if you chose to adopt this approach, which would really include some work on the annual report as well. So one of the things that we want to make sure about is we're all using the same verbiage with the same meaning. So when we talk about metrics, is this something that we can do off of the side of someone's desk, or is it something that will take more significant budget and capacity? We don't know until we actually get in there and say, what are council's hopes and dreams for metrics as far as the annual report goes? You know, we'll probably take that idea of, here's our annual report, here's three other samples, let's tease those apart a bit in the strategic planning and see what your hopes really are for it. Another key question that we need answered is, are you willing to continue with the existing strategic goals of the previous council's term as a framework? So these are really, I call them umbrellas. They're really large overarching goals. So proactively support reasoned community growth. You know, we can see where that would probably potentially, if council chose to, start tackling some of those housing issues that I heard you talk about, things like that. Focus on being well-managed and well-governed to serve our residents. One of the things we might want to do, sorry, I can't talk, is to identify the budget process as a strategic priority, right? That could have budget impact, it could have staff capacity impact. That might be something council wants to look at. So we really need to say, is this a framework we're going to continue with? If council chose to identify the budget process as a strategic priority for 2019, some of the things we could look at would be the philosophy of budget. And again, we tease out what we really mean by philosophy. There's lots of buzzwords floating around right now for budget. Is it some of those things councillor are talking about? Are you looking at a cost-of-living allowance built into the budget? Are you, right, until we actually have those discussions, we're only guessing how council wants to approach budget. Timelines, do we want to start coming out earlier? Do we want to tackle our core budget different than our capital and our one-time projects? Are there finance options that are available to council that you might want to explore in greater depth? And those are the kinds of discussions that we hope to have in strategic planning. So let's recap, and this is really, this is really the whole crux of the meeting, is saying, we need council's consideration on these points. So you've seen the recommended enhancements that staff put forward for budget process 2019, and we'd really like to have some dialogue about, are we missing anything that is also achievable? What should be included in the strategic planning sessions? Will you consider a three-pronged approach, or is there another idea that you have? Should staff use the existing six strategic goals as a baseline? And if council sees the budget process improvements as a key area, should that be added as a strategic priority for 2019? And there might be others that comes out from council discussion, but if we can get this, we can start developing work plans. And I do have a little cartoon, which is Kevin's key for taking on the, on the meeting, and hopefully we can tease out some conversation from you folks. But without good strategic planning, we really are only guessing what you want and only what we've heard to date. And so the strategic planning and budget process following an election is complex, unless we actually sit down and say, what are those expectations? So Kevin?
Let me go back a slide. Just go to 15, actually, it's probably the, in some ways, a good way. So there's two halves of this that I can see. One is the strategic planning question, and how we want to tackle that, and then there's the other part of this, which is sort of some of the budget questions, and trying to just get from this group what we hope to see this year, and then I personally want to see some structural things done with our budgeting and part of our planning. So how do we, you know, is that a shared goal of the body here? So the six strategic goals that are the baseline that existed before, we don't have to go through them all now, but I just, the question really to guide that strategic planning process, is that something that we want to sort of start from scratch and build a process to go from scratch, or are we okay sort of taking those six that are there and working with those and tweaking them to kind of meet our needs? So I'll, I think you look like you wanted to speak first, Councillor Patterson, then we'll go to Councillor Green.
Okay, if we're going to start with strategic plan, I guess what is important to me is that we start to align documents so we can go from one to the other and see how we're going to be accountable from the strategic priorities to the budget, to the annual report, and what we're doing. And so to me, the strategic plan, first of all, it should be in a consistent format, because the strategic plan that we've had, I have copies of all of the iterations of it from the last one, and it morphed, and it was very difficult, if you were a resident, to try and track it, because it wasn't consistent. So I think whatever we decide, we then should try to be consistent throughout at least the term of the council. So I think that's important. And I would like to see it also align with the OCP. Part of this was, came out in the CAO's overheads that she showed us, and that was, to align with the OCP, then our categories would be environment, community, services, but governance and finances are not specifically listed in the OCP. And that may be something that we want to consider on a go-forward basis. There are many municipalities that actually mandate long-term planning in their official community plan. So I'm not saying it has to happen tomorrow, but I think it's things that I would hope we could think about in, you know, as we go forward. The difficulty too is the strategic plan is, of course, over the term of the council, four years, but the financial plan is over five years, which is required by legislation. So we also have to, you know, feel our way through, how do we do that? Because we should also, I think, be thinking not just of our term, but as a foundation setting for whoever follows. So there's that. And also, I think in order to begin discussing in a reasonable manner, we again have covered a bit of that tonight, and I thank staff for the work they've done in preparing this, and for our Director of Finances in sharing with us all of the things that are part of the process, and I realize it's extensive. But there is in my mind, staff priorities and council priorities. And I think sometimes there is an expectation by members of council, and certainly by the community at large, that council are directing the staff and what they're going to do in a much broader way, and a more time-consuming way than is really actually possible. And the piece that's missing is that we quite often don't see clearly what staff need their resources for in a year. And so it's, in order to be, to be able to put something together that works for staff, works for council, and ultimately works for the community, I think we have to be able to share that information in a way that gives us an idea as a council, what's realistically achievable, year one, year two, year three, so that we're not, I think there's been a tendency to kind of tackle it on this year, but we really do have to think over the longer term and say, what, you know, what fits into what year? But being realistic for success, because a wish list is great, but if it's not achievable, because my expectation is with this council, that we are going to be working very hard at being accountable, and that means for anything that we tackle, whether it's budgets or strategic projects, that we have to come up with the measurements by which we are going to be able to report success or not success. So that's kind of the general framework that, you know, that I'm hoping to get to.
I'm going to try and summarize that a little bit, which is that you like the three and a half years, counting back, make sure we can get it done.
Exactly.
You want the budget to align with that.
Right.
So that's got to be part of it. And you also have the, what was the other piece that you?
Being, aligning it to the OCP, which is our governing document.
So that would essentially take that, not to use the sort of the existing pillars, but.
That's right.
But you would prefer to take that as a discussion around taking the OCP and reevaluating those umbrella pieces.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You got it.
Thanks. Councillor Green? Ms. Varela, do you want to add anything?
I just want to make sure, because Deb's writing furiously up there, but it's a really great tool to actually say, did we catch it all? So we've got measurements, being realistic, more clearly defined what staff resources are being used, align corporate documents. Yep, more than a wish list, yeah. So do you feel that that captures it?
I think so.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Councillor Green?
Thank you. And thanks to staff for preparing this excellent workshop tonight, I really appreciate it. I had gone back to a strategic planning workshop that I did this fall before the election with another organization, and I did share these with our interim CEO Lou Varela and with the mayor. But essentially, strategic planning really is about three key outcomes from my perspective. One is about insight, providing insight, providing oversight, and providing foresight. And I think that speaks to Councillor Patterson's comments around the future, that we're planning for beyond this council's term, or at least we should be thinking about that. And that brings me to, and I don't have any quarrel with the goals that have been presented that were provided today, thank you very much. The only thing I see missing from these strategic goals or objectives is the whole piece around environmental protection and climate change. And I think the climate change piece should be explicit in whatever we're doing. So if we want to add or refine some of these, for me, those were the two big missing pieces. So if we want to add or refine some of these, for me, those were the two big missing pieces. And really, I guess the outcome of strategic planning should address what we're doing, where we're going, and how we're going to measure. I would like us to also include human resources in that conversation. We talk a lot about financial resources and budgeting, but we have to understand as well, what are the human resources that it will take to achieve the goals that we establish, as well as timeline? So, um, I think, um, I heard clearly from the public in this last, uh, election campaign that, that people want us to achieve things, they want us to be realistic however, in how we're going to achieve things, and, and that requires finances and human resources. So I think we have to be realistic and pragmatic about those two issues. And, um, finally, the words of advice from that workshop that I attended was, on governance, do make it dynamic and simple. So, don't get too complicated with our wishes or goals. On benchmarks, don't measure a priority that is not strategic, and I think that's an important message. And on risk management, because we also have to think about risk management for anything we do, don't manage a risk that isn't ours. So those are sort of, the sort of standout, um, messages that I bring to the table. And I, I also, um, I also feel that we, that, that expectations are high, not only but from the community, but from each of us. I think we all come to the table with expectations. And I don't want us to be disappointed, and I certainly don't want us to disappoint the community or staff. So I think this really is a collaborative, um, effort, and, um, I think those are all my comments.
Okay, thank you. I think that, uh, well, we've had two, and two people seem to think there's still a few things to add and tweak within those, those guidelines. So we, uh, I'm just trying to wrap up this in terms of what we're gonna do with the strategic planning. Is there, is there counterpoints to make, or people feel comfortable, we can kind of open that up a little bit to, to reset the, the umbrella priorities? Council Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. I'm, you know, obviously, this is a dynamic process we're going through, and, and I'd be fine to, uh, to, at some point, go through a rev- review of some of them, adding some, um, possibly combining some, um, but certainly getting to a place where we can rank order them. Having, I, I, making reference to that cartoon you put up, where we have too many As and not enough Bs or Cs. So if we can at least get to a place where we can rank order them, uh, I think that would go a long way to help. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I guess what I'm taking from this, Lou, and I'm gonna look through the tables, if that's, in, in terms of the, those six priorities, we can still have them there as a talking point, but I think certainly to, to bring in the, the goals of the OCP into that discussion as well, and make sure that we're aligned with that, uh, seems a big piece. And I think the measurement piece falls beneath that in terms of the work plan and the deliverables that we're gonna get to, so, um, we'll leave that separate. Is everybody okay with that as a, okay? Good. And the, uh, I guess maybe then go, can you go back to fourteen? So let's just talk a little bit about the Budget Process 2019. And this is, again, we have this little sheet here, uh, that was handed out. So this is just a chance for us to give some sense, having, knowing where we're sort of midstream right now in 2019 budget. What are the, are there, are there feelings around this table of ways that, that people feel strongly about, uh, improving that process, uh, this, this term? And, and, and bringing, uh, there's, there's public engagement, there's other aspects of that into this, into the fold. I'll throw that over there. I'll, I'll tell you sort of one thing that I've, I've thought of in this process, which is, and again, one of the reasons for having these more in these sort of open committee of the whole formats, is I think that if we're tying our budget to our strategic planning, that seems like a very logical place that we're getting. We should have some public input into it, because that's really where the rubber hits the road in terms of our, our priorities. If we're not gonna fund them, then they don't matter that much. And, and so for, if we're, if we're sort of align, if we're able to align those two, I think that's really important. And if we do that, we should, I think, probably include some public inputs. Just, again, my priority there being to get, make sure we don't miss anything, or have forgotten anything, or have any, anything left on the table. But I'm, I'm open to other people here in terms of looking at where we're at. Are there things that people feel strongly about, or don't care that much about, uh, within this? We have the, some staff pieces, and I think probably the, the first two will just do, for the most part, unless there's any objections to that, it seems unlikely. But the other ones are the stars in terms of the, um, uh, the, the pieces, uh, if anybody feels like ranking those, or, or has any comments on them. And I'll, I'll look to people who haven't spoken yet, Council Braithwaite or Appleton. Tara?
Well, yeah, okay, I was just gonna ask, uh, yeah, sorry, thank you. On the, um, the Committee of the Whole, for the public input on draft budget, would there be other, I mean, we're gonna advertise it more, uh, we'd, we'd have a special Committee of the Whole. I remember last year we did some online stuff. Is there any thought around doing something like that?
We have discussed it here. Uh, last year, we went through the process as kind of a pilot project, pardon me, and, um, we had a total of forty-seven responses. We advertised quite extensively, we provided staffing at the library for those who maybe couldn't, uh, reply online or do the survey online. So it's certainly an option, um, but given the limited response that we saw, we didn't see that it was, uh, maybe a great option.
So you, I, I wasn't following the way you were advertised, I, I, it came to my attention. But so what you're saying is you felt that it was quite a fulsome sort of broadcasting to the community, that they should have known, and that those who, who would have wanted to fill it out had the opportunity. And you, you don't see that it could be optimized in any way, or get better reach in any other, without a huge amount of extra effort. Are we doing what we need to do in terms of trying to connect with the community and with that medium? That's really what I'm asking.
I think for that particular, um, process, we did, uh, we advertised through the local newspaper quite extensively. It was on the website, we made every, um, effort that we could to make sure people were aware of it. So from that perspective, I, I think we, we did, um, reach out as much as we possibly could. The, last year, the report, the final report was included in the Budget Binder for the council, and the responses were really, I'll say, kind of all over the map as well. So I'm not sure how much benefit that was.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Council Appleton, and then Council Zelka.
Through your chair, uh, I, I think that, to my mind, I think, uh, the, the lack of participation in the online budgeting and potentially the, the lack of over, engagement overall, really for me, relates back to the lack of sort of accessible, easily digestible information about the budget. So I really come into this point on this slide, which is really about more visual reporting and more information provision. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm generally the, the last person to say, we should, you know, sort of look very carefully at, what opportunities we're providing the public to engage, but I'm a little bit reticent just in terms of having a special Committee of the Whole on the budget topic specifically, before we provide a fairly fulsome amount of information out to the public, that's in a format that they can sort of digest and understand. So if we're making resource decisions on, uh, with pertaining to staff, and where staff might put their time, uh, to further the cause of budgeting, I would be interested potentially in ensuring that we get a, a good amount of easily accessible information online and available in front of you. I'm, I'm pretty adamant about the fact that I think that the online budgeting tool is a useful tool, but I think that there was no real back, I, I think people were coming at it without the background information that they needed. So rather, I think, than jump to a Committee of the Whole asking people about budgeting, I think we should consider whether or not we want to do that before we provide people with, uh, good information that makes them understand the process. I think people are at a fairly fundamental level with, uh, with that knowledge. So I'd like to see us do better in that, in that regard, in terms of where we spend our time and effort.
Thank you, Council Appleton. I, I would, I think echo that a little bit personally, in the sense that I think that tool, provided almost a, a theoretical guide as opposed, it didn't, it didn't tie so directly to our specifics. It, it gave, um, some generalities, but not a lot of our, on our specifics. So I think that's a lot more work to get to that much detail, but I think that's a, uh, I think you're right, that without that information upfront, it's very hard to, for, to give meaningful input. Council Zelka?
Uh, thank you again, Chair. Um, I, I'm echoing some of the comments here to some extent. Definitely, uh, I, I appreciated the process that, uh, that Finance, uh, put forward, uh, and, and the pilot that, that, that was done in terms of giving people a chance to, to try and, uh, imagine what, what it would be like if they put their hat on. And I know, I hear there's only forty-five, uh, participants, plus possibly some, 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 uh, some manual, um, input as well. Uh, so I, I really appreciate getting the, uh, a sense of the measurement of, of our, of our first attempt in terms of that pilot. Uh, I still think it is worthwhile using tools like that, not necessarily the same tool, but, but tools along those, those same lines as, as one way of providing, um, a bit of, um, perspective for the public in terms of what we can and cannot do. And that's one of the things I liked about that tool, uh, when I had a chance to go and take a look at it. It actually provided the area in terms of, you know, what is the area that we can influence? What is, uh, in terms of local government, but there's always, from that education perspective, what are the parts that we actually have a lever that we can pull on, and all these other areas that people think we can influence? But actually, we can't, because legislatively, or for whatever reason, uh, they're, they're just not, not part of our, our bailiwick. So I definitely would like to see, uh, some sort of a tool be part of this public process, in addition to more information being provided to give, um, a, a sense of the impact of, uh, the information being, being provided. So the information is one thing, but what does it mean? So getting back a little bit to the dynamic and simplistic aspect, so that's one aspect. Another, uh, uh, thing, um, slightly echoing, um, but maybe providing another perspective, is that from a place of transparency, you know, it, it's providing information, it's providing, um, uh, some, some, some context, and providing a, a, a way of, of giving people a chance as to figure out what we're doing. But I think it's also, since, as a council, we really have, only have an influence on, what, five to ten percent of the budget, uh, or something along this line? I don't know exactly what the number is. The rest, or the majority of the budget is stuff that's legislative, garbage collection, and water, and, and sewage, and all those other things that really is gonna happen, and we don't really have much of influence on, so. But, uh, but again, the public doesn't really know what that is about. So with respect to transparency, if there's a way that we can make the work visible. And one of the, one of the things that kind of excited me when I, when I, um, heard our, our Chief Administrative Officer talk about maybe possible changes to the, for, just, just, one possibility, a change to the agenda, where we get, uh, month, uh, um, meeting after meeting, a, a, a chance to have, down on the bottom of the agenda, here's all the things that you're working on, and here's where we're at. And you don't have to always ask the questions like, what happened to that thing that we voted on like, two years ago, that I've not heard anything about? It'd be right there. So those ways of, of enhancing the transparency, not just of the money, not just of, 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 of the efforts that we're trying to put forward, but also all the incredible work that's being done by staff, um, I think it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
So just in terms of the 2019 Budget Process, I'm hearing that, yes, looking at those tools as part of this should be seriously looked at. And obviously, I think that, that's gonna have to come back with either a cost or time consideration as we, as we come back in January. Um, Council Green?
Thank you. Um, and I agree, the tools are really important, but there is a whole segment of our community that is not online. And I think we have to be really cognizant of that, so whatever materials we produce, if we can also produce them in hard copy to be available at the main desk, something like that. I know it requires more work, and I, I'm sorry about that, but I really am conscious of the fact that, I would, I would hesitate to guess that at least fifty percent of the people living in Oak Bay are not necessarily online. So when we, we talk about online tools and so on, it's, and I think there is a place absolutely for that. But I think we need to be equally aware of the need to be reaching people in other formats.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a good point. We don't have to talk about every point, so it's fine, Council Braithwaite, you wanna, you wanna jump in, jump in, jump in.
I was just gonna say that, um, sometimes, um, in the different organizations that I've worked in, they'll do something that's called like Where Your Dollar Goes. So if you're looking at visuals, and this is something that we could put up on the screen out in the, in the foyer here, just a little PowerPoint that shows, you know, twenty percent goes to parks in Iraq, tw- twenty-five percent goes to infrastructure. Whereas, here's the areas where the rest of your money could go. And, and even just show visually something like that, then people might have a better understanding that really, out of every dollar, we only have twelve cents, or whatever it is, to go to something within the, that, within the municipality that, that we have control over. So it might just be something as easy as that. But I think, yeah, um, accessibility of the information, I think, is really, really key, and that's something we should really look at.
Okay, and I think the other question on here, I think, the first of the starred items on this, the, the question of the, of the workshop in January to build out, are, is council in agreement to do that, sort of three and a half years, sort of working backwards process? Is that? So I think, I know it's got a star beside it, 'cause it takes work, but I think, I think there's, getting lots of nods around the table here. Council Braithwaite?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to say one other thing. I, I mean, we talk about, um, having public meetings for, um, or Special Committee of the Holes for Public Input around the draft budget. I would almost rather see us do something like a town hall, and I know not a lot, not a lot of people agree with me on this, but something about, like a town hall in January, February, to start getting people's input, and start allowing people to ask questions and put things on the table around the budget and strategic planning in, in that respect. Give us some ideas prior to us coming out with, um, with information in April or May.
So I'm gonna just go back to you on that one, because I, I, I don't, I, I mean, I've struggled with this one as well. I think that, that, that tool is very valuable. Do you think, do you in your mind see that as being a part of the budget process, part of the strategic planning process? Like an annual piece, like, have you thought through any of that?
I haven't really thought through that, um, but, um, I, it could be a little bit of both perhaps. Yeah.
Council Zelka?
I'd like to, uh, support the initiative. I would hope that the, these, um, uh, these town halls, or whatever we're gonna call them, are, are themed to some extent, so that we can have a bit of a limited focus. And, and there might be some repetition year over year in terms of, uh, looking at some finance and, and budgeting aspects, or strategic priorities aspect. But certainly, as long as they're themed, I, I'd like to see, actually, um, with respect to all the many, many recommendations that came forward in the, uh, Public Engagement Task Force, you know, it's definitely, I would like, definitely like that one pulled out and, and brought forward, if, if at all possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and just, there's, there's probably, I think, way back in your slide, you had the sort of the stages of, so there's the strategic planning, there's the budgeting process, and there's also the annual report. And those, to my mind, are the three logical places that we're seeking public input on this. So I, I don't know, maybe we don't have to, I don't think we have to resolve tonight the exact tool that we're gonna use, but those, are those sort of the three places that, to sort of make sure we're, we're, we're looking at the planning in those two first stages, and looking at the results, and, and looking towards next year with the annual report? Are those logical places? I, you know, I can have to ask those all tonight, but I think those are things to think about as we're considering our planning process next, for next year. Council Appleton?
Well, just further to that, and, and briefly, I would like to see us, and I think it's been alluded to here a couple of times, but I would like to see us sort of have a, have as a running theme through this process, that, that, all, the interconnectedness of all these pieces, that it becomes clear to the public, and we've kind of alluded to it, and, and been in general agreement, that the strategic plan and the budgeting process, and the annual reporting that happens on behalf of the municipality, that all of those things are linked, and that there are opportunities for engagement at all of those points, that it, it's, can seem evident to a lot of people, but it isn't evident, I think, to quite a few people. So I think as a running, sort of underlying, uh, theme of how we promote and how we engage with citizens on this, if they understand that this is where we're, where we're going, and they understand that all of these things are connected, I think is important.
Council Patterson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to, um, come back to the, the point that Council Braithwaite made, and that is about holding public meetings prior to the actual budget, once it's all, it's meshed together. We, we are, you know, we're going to be entering new territory here, but I think one of the most important things about the, the, the quality, and there's, there, I think there's a whole list of qualities that, that, that go around good budgeting process. But the most important one, when it comes to public, is transparent. So the budget process and public information provided should be open, accessible, and understandable. And that is sometimes, at least based on my experience, the most difficult thing to achieve in getting the, um, uh, the terminology, uh, and, and the readability of the document into, uh, going from the language of, of the financial world to the language of the, um, the community. And the only way we will- And the only way we will be able to check along the way if something is actually understandable is to test the waters. And if we have discussions with the public prior to the finished product, it may not be perfect in year one, but we will take it a step further and we will be able to continuously refine and enhance it to hopefully, three and four years down the road, get it to a document that is really something that is a good information piece to all of us. Thank you.
And I think that point of doing that iterative improvements over this term was sort of the question was, that would take us making that a priority, because it's a fair bit of work over those, over the next three and a half years to get there. So I think that's part of this question here tonight, and maybe I'll just ask that question now, is that, is that something that we actually hope for over this term to actually do those improvements? Like, is that a priority? We don't have to say it's a priority, but should we include that as part of our, yeah, I'm seeing lots of nods, so yeah. Well, just bring it to where I'm saying, bring it to the strategic priorities, and we'll have to discuss what that looks like and what the impacts are, what the strategic priorities are. We're not going to say yes right here because there's other things that might bump it off, I have to be, but we have to, I just want to make sure that we're, as a group, okay, okay. That's good. Counsel Green, you had something to add?
Just quickly.
Yeah?
Thank you, Chair. To Counselor Braithwaite's point about a town hall meeting, and I also support the concept, one of the things we could contemplate, and I know it's time consuming or potentially, but maybe staff can guide us on this issue, but we could break a town hall meeting down into three meetings, and they would be what I would call neighborhood area meetings, north, central, south. So instead of having a massive town hall meeting, which sometimes isn't manageable on something like this, you could hold a meeting, take council offsite, hold a meeting in North Oak Bay, one in Central, one in South, on these important topics. So that's just an idea, and I'll just leave it with you.
Did you want to add anything to that?
If we could actually parking lot that, I think that's something that council may want to explore at a later date. That certainly is something we could look at for 2020 and beyond. And in the town hall style engagement, again, limited for what we can do this year. So I'm sort of hearing a conflicting message. One is we really want to focus on the message, the other one is the form in which we present it. So if we're going to focus heavily on visuals and get creative on ways to put that out, I don't know how much of a town hall style meeting, certainly multi-regional, that we're going to be able to pull off for this year, but I think that's one of those key areas for future visioning. If budget process becomes a strategic priority, those are the sorts of things we can try to flesh out. I would request clarification on the Special Committee of the Hole for Public Input on the draft budget. So what I'm hearing is that we'd like to really focus on visuals. Is the Committee of the Hole and public budget presentation something you're hoping for this year, or do you want us to focus more on the actual materials and finding other ways to get that message out?
Everybody's jumping in on this one. This is good. Counsel Patterson?
I would prefer to focus on the content rather than the visuals at least year one, just because it's an awful lot. In order to get the visuals, you have to have the content. And I think it's very important that we get the content right and the understanding right with residents, and probably go more to the visuals in year two. I just wonder if it's realistic to be able to accomplish it all in year one without bringing in or adding to our resources to achieve it, but I may be wrong.
Counsel Zelka, do you want to add?
Thank you so much, Chair. Certainly wouldn't want staff to be confused with all of this exuberance at the table, but I do feel like a bit like a kid in a candy store. So I'm doing my best not to overeat while I express all of the things about what I would like to eat. So understandably, it's going to take a number of years to get to a fully fleshed out process that I think we can be very, very proud of. No matter, some of the suggestions, the starred ones in particular, would, if just that was done for this year, I could probably get to a place where I would be satisfied. I imagine if we're going to be doing, for example, a town hall meeting with respect to input to a draft budget, most likely we would have to start our draft budget earlier on in the process, earlier on in the year. And we haven't done that this year, so hence, there's a good reason why certain things couldn't be done this year.
Counsel Appleton?
So I feel like I'm retreading myself a little bit, but I think that I favor the second option just in terms of focusing on information outwards. If it's, it's not as simplistic as if we have three starred items and they're all going to take a fair amount of resources and we have to decide which one of those has to give in terms of how much resources we're going to allocate, I think that it is reasonable for us to look at allocating any resources that would go into planning the Special Committee of the Hole specifically related to budgeting to focusing on visuals and information out for this first year. I agree with the idea as a concept, I think it's something that's valuable and would have a good impact, but I'm fairly convinced that as of 2019, that folks who might come to such a meeting aren't armed with enough information to be able to really actively participate in that. I think what would go along with that would be, and it's slightly imperfect, but I think that people need to know that they have an opportunity to engage with the existing budgeting process, to say, we're going through an iterative process of improving our budget engagement. In 2019, we're going to give you some information, we're going to encourage you to participate in the existing budgeting meetings that we have. It is slightly imperfect, but in terms of resource allocations and what we might be able to do in year one, I think that might be potentially more doable for staff.
Is that clearer now, or not?
I actually think that's some really valuable discussion, and then I think what we do is we go develop that work plan and we come back to you.
Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, Chair. I think that the, one of the most important pieces that has to enter into how we do the budgets this year is to actually break out the capital components, the capital projects. And even though we may not have a perfect longer-term plan for capital, but we have to start showing the, what is considered capital projects as separate from our core services that we provide to the public, at least as a starting point.
So staff will have to take that away. We certainly know that ideally budget is easier to understand when your core is broken out, and then you get to talk in terms of your contracted increases or decreases, your cost of living, a lot of those things. When you start to add on, break that out and then add on your one-time projects and your capital projects, it certainly is easier to understand. I'm not sure if we can get there this year, given where we are midstream. So what we'd like to do is have the opportunity to come back to you and say, is that doable or is that not? And then it becomes part of the strategic priority discussion, if that's where council wants to go.
Thank you. So we have the answers, number one, we have an answer to number two, so no and yes, and then we have the, so the recommended enhancements, I think we may have a couple more comments on. In terms of the, can you just go back, see there? That three-pronged approach, can we just go back to that really quickly? So this is sort of the general question about how we're going to be tackling some of these things, and I think we have to be a little careful not spending too much time on the vision and mission and things of that nature. But I did hear quite clearly that we want to make sure we tie it into something that's consistent with the OCP and with those pieces. And I think it's important for us to get a philosophy of budgeting as well, which is just to give some direction to staff in terms of what we want to bring, be brought back here. So given that this is a strategic plan tied to a budget, is that, was that sort of what the staff are thinking of in that first one, that we're going to sort of have that anchor, and then the second part will be the actual digging down more into the priorities?
Thank you, Chair. So one of the challenges, again, given where we are in our legislated deadlines and the amount of meetings that we can have to get this done, ideally, this would be the flow through you would see. You'd have that philosophy piece, you would do your work plan, and then we'd talk about the annual report and metrics we're going to use through the year. Sitting here, I'm not sure if we can get there in that particular order, but we can give it a good shot. Again, we have to build out that calendar, once you've given us direction that this is how you'd like to see it shake out, then we have to go build the work plan. If you had looked at us and said, no, we don't want to do that, there's not a lot of point in having come to you with the idea of fully fleshed out. So we'll go away if this is the endorsement of the council, and we'll bring you back a work plan.
Counsel Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Question for CEO, the date on there, the, and on here, it's June 28th, annual report made available to the public. So is that, is the, that date in June, is that prior to approval?
So, and it actually should be June 28th because it's the last business day in June. So the legislated deadline for your annual report is actually linked to when it's made available to the public, and council can endorse afterwards. So that the endorsement of council isn't actually a legislated timeline, it's when it's made available to the public.
Just a follow-up question through you, Chair. Then, it's made available to the public, when would the public have the, be able to ask questions or get information if they want it on the document?
So part of our work plan would be the calendar for developing the annual report, so when council gets to see it, when the public gets to see it, and then meeting that legislated deadline. So that would be part of that work plan we'd bring back to you.
My concern is that the annual reports have been presented in July, and typically early July, when most of the community isn't available. If we, if we want the annual report to really be able to convey to the community what our position is on the goals and objectives for the year, I think that trying to, working really hard if we can to achieve a date in June before the holiday season would be wonderful.
So I'll just take that back a step because I think that's a very valid point, but it's also one of those points, if we're going to do a budgeting as a strategic priority, that would be, that discussion about how do we move these things earlier would be part of that question about, it's probably not a standalone piece, but all of the pieces have to move forward. So again, that's work for staff and that's something that we have to agree as a council. So I think that's part of our strategic planning discussion, not, not that it's invalid, but not so much to settle it here today. Is that fair?
And I think one of the improvements that's already been made is that we're already working on the last year's summary. So again, trying to advance those dates, trying to get the content earlier, we'll probably bring back some samples, like I mentioned, to see what council, again, is thinking of for a framework. And I can let you know, we're already starting on some rough content for how we will highlight 2018.
Thank you. Counsel Green?
I just have a question through you, Chair, too. Our CEO, official community plans are normally reviewed, not required, but they're sort of reviewed every five years. Has any been thought given to that process for next year, the 2014 official community plan? And secondly, how would that fit with that three-pronged approach if that is a consideration? If it isn't, perhaps it's a parking lot issue, but I've been thinking about it over the course of the last few months and thinking, gosh, you know, that was June 2014 when that was adopted. Some changes have occurred in the community and, so it's just a question really on process, I guess, and whether or not that has been on anyone's radar. Thank you.
Sorry, I was wondering if Deborah was here. So to the best of my knowledge, that is non-staff's radar at this time. Certainly, the zoning bylaw is, some of your housing issues, things like that. But again, council can change that course as part of the strategic planning if that's a path that you want to take.
Thank you. All right. Counsel Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. I realize that there's multi-layers happening sort of in this, certainly at this step of the process. This work plan is almost really flowing through, right through to the annual report with respect to transparency and how we report out to the very few people that are in the audience right now. But at the same time, there are parallel work plans that will need to be fleshed out with, that'll hopefully tie in, or will tie in with our soon-to-be-reviewed strategic aspects and then the breakdown. So of course, you did mention the bylaws and the housing pieces, and whether the OCP gets in there, or maybe just bits and pieces of the OCP gets reviewed. There may be a need for us to do a little bit of a review when we get to the point of the strategic, a corporate strategic plan, which hopefully won't be this year, it might be more like next year. I want to echo the words of the mayor, not spending a lot of time on mission, vision, values necessarily, this go-around, but possibly tying it in with our new and improved OCP. So that corporate strategic plan may end up being a new and improved OCP, I'm not quite sure what that'll look like yet, but we can certainly look at that when we get to it. Thank you.
All right. I guess we, please put on a parking lot, the idea of doing the OCP again. No, I hear what you're saying, I think that's actually a really valid point in terms of, I think the aligning piece is really an important one for us to have on there. Can you go to the slide 13? And I just sort of want to make sure this is sort of understood by people as a priority piece. Is there anything in this, because I think this will kick into how much we can do with the strategic priorities and how much of this is going to be left. But there are questions here like on, you know, like borrowing and not borrowing, some of these other pieces that we want to sort of have in this. How far into this, into those details do we want? Because I think one of the things that I've heard is that council wants to give staff as many tools as possible for tackling the issues as they come forward. And so how, to my mind, that makes sense to do that fairly early in this process? Is that something we can get into, sort of the high-level discussion around those as part of our strategic planning process? Would you see that being a breakout over the, like some of the high-level philosophy pieces settled and then the details to come over the coming years?
So the budget process would be established as a strategic priority, and then you'd start to build out that work in those discussions.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. I, this printer is so small, I can't read it, so I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit hindered here in terms of my actual looking to make sure that we've covered up all the pieces here. Actually, at this time, I actually said around eight o'clock, I was going to invite people from the public if they want to come forward, if they have anything that they want to sort of add into this discussion, we'll take that. And I also just want to say thank you to all the staff who came out tonight for this. This is, it's really important to, I appreciate this, not the interaction, we're not getting into the details of each of your budgets, but it's really important to have you in this room, I think, to listen to this and hopefully to give us some feedback as we go forward. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to come forward and speak at this meeting? Please come forward. Again, we're trying to keep this meeting reasonably short. If you have some suggestions here on ways of, some priorities, just again, for the record, if you just state your name and municipality, please, and then...
Oak Bay, Anthony Mira, South Oak Bay. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but, and I'm not trying to be critical here, it's information, so it's going to sound critical, but you're all, a lot of you are new, so you won't understand, you don't have to own this. I've attended all the estimate committee meetings in the last ten years, I think. Anyway, so I don't hear... Anyway, so I don't hear any I didn't hear any comment about the estimates committee process. I don't know if that's the budget process you talk about changing or but that's really not a good process. I mean, basically, what we're doing at those meetings, we're doing the police budget and the fire budget, and we're doing grants, and then we spend very little time on the actual budget.
So, the short answer is yes, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about changing the budgeting process.
That's what we're going to think about changing. Good. And then I really like what Counselor Appleton was saying. We can't have surveys, we can't have meetings without information. What we've done generally at these budget meetings, estimates committee meetings is talk about police budgets, fire budgets, grants, QP cost increases. That represents about 3%. Many other communities have the same costs. These are all rubber stamped. So, they're averaging 3%. We're averaging 6%. I just read a chart before the election, someone came out with a chart that said we're averaging 6%. So, what we do, I think the public like to know what the other 3% represents. And I think that's really important to get that information out. I mean, I know it's not infrastructure, I know it's not all. So, I'd like to know, and I think the public would like to know because they don't understand the stuff, you know, they're not accountants. I've done a lot of budgets. I've done I've done millions of dollars worth of grants, and I can tell you right now what we discuss with grants. Most of the grants are most of the the organizations that we fund grants that are funded with the grants that we're discussing are funded, the core funding is provided by the federal and provincial governments. So, they have audits. We're putting top-up money in there. We don't really have to discuss a lot of this. And like I say, I've done millions of dollars worth of grants. You don't have to go into $1,000 to $2,000, $3,000 and talk about it for 20 minutes. I mean, it's automatic. There's some you do, that's fine, but we're spending a whole session on that.
So, you're in favor of improving that process?
Well, yeah, I think you're speeding it up. Yeah, I think so. That's all. So, I'm just I'm just providing that information. I think it's.
No, it's fair. I think I would reflect that comment back a little bit is it is hard to know what the increases are and it's hard because our, you know, by by requirement, almost, we have budgets done in one format and then we have to do our SOPH reporting and everything else in our annual report, and it's totally different. So, they don't they don't sort of line up. We almost have to make some effort to kind of give that continuity across the pieces.
But there are plenty of models around that award-winning models with small communities that have good budget processes. I think we could copy some of those. It was disturbing a little bit to hear that going to take us forever to change it. I think we don't need, you know, if you take a look at some of the other processes, we talked about being midstream, but you know, if we measure what other people are doing, we even got our toe in even in terms of what they've done and what we've done. I mean, if some of them had meetings since or six months ago, three months ago, many of them have a full budget to be discussed this month. I mean, you can just take a look at the research, it's, you know, just research it, it's there. So, I think we can do some other stuff, that's all I'm saying. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Please come forward, same routine, just your name and municipality, please.
My name is Mary Douglas Hunt, and I am a resident of Oak Bay. On the phone this afternoon, I did some investigating as to what other municipalities do. And I'll just give some examples, and I know that we don't have to do exactly what everyone else does. But in my opinion, if someone has a good plan, you don't reinvent the wheel. You check it out, you have discussions maybe with the inventors of so-called wheel and make it easier for our staff to do their job. So, I'll just say that in Callwood, they have at least four Cal meetings only to discuss budget with their residents. They want feedback. They want to find out how perhaps we could save money. And I know that I listened to a webcast and when Esther was a before she was a council member, at a meeting, and there was another gentleman, James Murtaugh, and another gentleman, Bill, can't remember his last name, but they had such brilliant things to say and such good ideas, but they had three minutes. It was absolutely not enough time. So, in my investigation this afternoon, Callwood, Victoria, Sanich, Esquimalt, I could call more tomorrow, they are so keen on resident participation, they're focusing on this. And why? Again, to make their community better, to save money. I don't have great financial ideas, but I know a lot of people who do. My husband, number one, he runs a $65 million budget as one aspect of his job. That's not a big aspect of his job. And you can walk in and he will tell you where every dollar is spent, anytime. Surprise him, he'll tell you. That's a small part of his job. Victoria, they had a town hall on November 30th with their residents discussing the budget. They're having their second one mid-January. Sanich, they're focusing on back and forth with their residents. Their schedule for their meetings will be out by the end of December for their residents. Again, stressing more public input for this. Esquimalt, tonight, their timeline for their public participation meetings is going to be discussed tonight, it'll be finalized tonight. So, I'm hearing I heard about award-winning budgets, municipalities who have won awards. So, that really got me investigating. And we can win an award, can't we, in Oak Bay? We absolutely can win an award for our budget process. How do we do it? We find out from the communities who've won awards how they did it. And so, Central Sanich won an award. I called the gentleman, his name is Paul, and he is so open to having us, not me, but perhaps our mayor, Debbie Carter, obviously, wouldn't do it without her, and maybe someone like Esther, who I know is an expert in finances, sitting down to find out what they did. He designed this program, and he had a chap working under him or with him, sorry, named Chris. Chris went to Callwood, I spoke with Chris today. Chris joined the Callwood team December 11th, 2017. Their finance department had implemented software to improve their their process. He was again, he joined December 11th, 2017. The budget was ready by February 2018. So, how many months is that? It was ready using this software. And from the Government Finance Officers Association, they won an award. And he just got there in December. But they worked together with this incredible program that I want Oak Bay to have. It is amazing. We need our staff to have the tools to make their job easier but efficient. And again, we could win an award. So, Chris is very open and he knows Debbie Carter, and good things are said about Debbie, and I was so pleased to to hear that. They want to talk to you. So, the door is open. Why wouldn't we do this if we're trying to make things better? And Andrew, I appreciated some of your comments tonight. And, you know, I have to tell you, people are so they they mince around and dance around town halls. I don't understand that. We are a community. You pay taxes, I pay taxes. So, why wouldn't we want to come together as a community to hear what people have to say? I have a fabulous community. I ran a town hall, you know very well. I hate to keep repeating this. It took me 12 days from start to finish. I did all the advertising. I put, you know, flyers everywhere. We had 300 people come. We loved being together as a family. And it seems in Oak Bay, it's just this, they don't want to, you know, it's just it's not us and you guys, we're all a team and we need a town hall. And let people come and and talk. People in Oak Bay are desperate to talk. Are all candidates meeting? You couldn't even get in the door. People were leaving. There was no room for people. They want to come together as Oak Bay residents, and you guys have to give us the opportunity. And you're going to learn a lot, and I'm going to learn a lot. And that is what I am asking you. I don't want to hear, oh, next year, next year. No way next year. No way next year. It can be done this year if we have the right tools and the the gumption to make it happen. And I don't, you know, my husband's going to retire next year, and we're trying to figure out our budget. And if we don't get this down, what's going to happen? What's going to happen when you guys retire? And I'm asking you, please, give Paul at Central Sanich a call or Chris, they've invited you.
Thank you.
Please do that for the residents of Oak Bay. And I expect a town hall probably in in January, absolutely. I put my faith in you guys. You're my friends, and we're in this together. Okay?
Thank you.
I don't want to come here asking for a town hall anymore. I did it last year, I got nowhere. So, I did my own. I mean, I could do one on our finances if you want. I don't think you want that.
I think we're I think we're here definitely to find a process that that allows us to have that input in an effective way. I think I think that's what I've heard around this table as well here. So, that's good. Thank you.
So, that's how we can do it. And we can win an award next year, maybe this year.
I just want to have a good budgeting process. I don't care if we win the award or not, I just want to have a good.
That's what we're asking, is a good budgeting process.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak?
Curtis Hobson, Oak Bay. One, two, three, I think I have four or five points. So, the citizen engagement tool, the budget tool that was offered up to the citizens last year, and there was only 47 respondents. I don't think in 2018, 2019, that ads in the Oak Bay News are the most effective way to reach the members of the community. I think almost everybody here is on Oak Bay local Facebook. There's over 4,000 members, probably not all of them are from Oak Bay. But I don't recall seeing that citizen engagement tool or budgeting tool on that site. There's a couple other Facebook groups, particular to Oak Bay, and there's a couple particular to local politics in the CRD. So, just to get that dissemination of information out to people to let them know what's available for them to for a way for them to contribute. If people are like me, I read the newspaper, I don't read the ads, and I don't read the little things, I read the articles. And I think a lot of people, you know, see the Oak Bay header, and it's like, what is that? You know, it's not a it's not a news story. Maybe if there was a news story about the budgeting tool, it might be helpful. So, there's that. On the slides that went through on the strategic priorities, I noticed that there is one about good governance or something as a strategic priority. To me, that's just a given. We should have good governance, don't you think? Right? I don't think that should be a strategic priority. I just think that's a given, right? Like, at my work, I'm expected to do a good job. That's a given. It's not a like I have a improvement plan to so I can improve my practice, but it's not a strategic priority to do a good job. So, I think you probably could move that to the vision statement or area of the the three-pronged approach and make room for the improved budget process. Another thing, I get a little angsty and upset, maybe those are hard words as a citizen, when I see council and the budgeting go outside the the core work that I feel that the council should be doing, which is public safety and infrastructure. So, on the public safety, I see members of our police department here and fire department, I feel very, very safe in Oak Bay. So, the core work of of the municipality and the council is to to keep the public safe. And congratulations, everyone, I feel very safe. The other piece of that is the infrastructure, and we all know that our infrastructure is not in good shape. So, when we do move to this new budget process, I really feel that the public, as has been said, needs to be aware of what we have to spend and is already spent, basically, and what we have to work with, right? And what we have to work with is got to go towards that infrastructure piece, right? Because we all know that we don't build houses on bad foundations and we don't build communities on poor infrastructure. Well, our community's been built on good infrastructure 100 years ago. So, we know our infrastructure's not good. And the other thing that we know is missing is policy for borrowing. Individual from the MFA came and talked to us all and basically told us, you can borrow this much money without a referendum, you can borrow a lot more if you get the public's approval, but you can't borrow anything until you go to us and or draft a bylaw or some sort of policy to actually borrow money, and we don't have that. So, we know that we have to replace our infrastructure, and we know that we're going to have to borrow for that. So, the first step is to go to the people who are going to lend us the money and say, here's our policy, here's our bylaw. You know, I use a lot of analogies back to a household, thinking of a community as a household. So, if you're going to buy a house, you go to a mortgage broker, you go and talk to the bank, you see how much you can borrow. We're not even there yet, right? We don't have any any bylaws or policies for borrowing, so I really think that's key. That that has to be, we can't, we can't think three, five, 10 years out if we haven't even developed a policy to borrow money. So, you know, to me, that's priority number one. Information for the public to Counselor Appleton's point, I teach at a high school and sometimes I help out in the math class when they're doing Excel. Excel makes excellent graphs and charts. So, easily digestible, understandable. You know, we could take pie chart and say, you know, 85% of the pie is spoken for, we're talking about the 15%. We're not talking about this other 85%. This is the 15% we have to work with. That's the public engagement piece. So, I don't think the content and the visual or the information piece are are too difficult to generate. But then again, I don't work in this building, so I don't know if that's entirely accurate. Aspirations for a new budget timelines, as Mary talked about, I think is really important. So, as part of the the budgeting process and the revision is to come up with those timelines, like when are we going to have something similar to North Sanich, right? When do we look at the best examples? When do we think that we can match those best examples? And I agree with Kevin, I'm not so concerned about the award. And I think, you know, the last election, there was huge attendance at all the debates, right? People were like turned away, there's no room. So, I don't think it is is wise to put that off. Like, Oak Bay people like to come out and participate. We've seen that with the light up, with the street market. You can get a lot of people in a building if you offer them the opportunity to come out, and that would address the piece with a lot people, not a lot of people being online, right? So, now, there's just some disparaging comments made about the attendees at the Dave Dunnett Theater about old and being old and stale. Well, we have to face facts, you know, our community is made up made up of older people, not exclusively, but our average age is a little bit older, and those people like to come out. So, I think that's it for me, and I hope you take some of my suggestions in going forward with your process.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. I think you're, yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you.
I can get up.
You can get up, yeah. No, I think there's a lot of the comments that are made about the timelines. That's sort of why, you know, recognizing that those those issues is why we're looking at this as a possible strategic priority is to address some of those. So, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak for the public? Oh, one more.
Yes, Jake Richardson, Oak Bay. I just want to reiterate what the other two people have said. I think you would be doing yourselves a disservice as newly elected officials to not have a public engagement, a town hall meeting at least by February. Okay? The. Okay? The outline of what it should contain, that's obviously up to you. But I think it would also be a good chance to get the information to the people on the budget process. Because the people in general, my understanding is, that they don't know how it works. They don't understand. How difficult is it to get a few posters made, if that's what you want? You know, have it at the Dave Dunnett, you know? And, but be there and be able to answer their questions because they don't know. Because we run households. As households, we count the income first, not the outflow. Okay? As a council, you count the expenses and make the income to match it. And people don't get that difference. It's not that they're dumb. They just don't understand it. And I think they need to be informed. So reinvent the wheel. I had it already written on my notes. I think it's a really bad thing to reinvent the wheel. All of this information is available on the internet from various sources. Put it together. Don't give yourself a whole year to plan what you're going to do. Please, get on and do it. That's what we're looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? Sure, we're trying to wrap up the meeting here in the next two seconds, so please come forward. Yes, if you wish.
My name hasn't changed. I think instead of our board where we put announcements facing this building that no one knows even that it's there, I would like to adopt something like Sanich does. If there is a meeting, an important meeting, a town hall meeting, budget meetings, a sandwich board. That's what they have on their front lawn. So anyone driving by can see exactly what's going on. They know where to look. As big a sandwich board as we can and bright colors, so it attracts people's attention. They drive by, they walk by every day, and that's what I'd like to see. In discussing the 47 responses, I didn't even know about this. And I'm on the internet, all right? So we are not communicating with the residents about what's going on, and that really needs to change.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to bring it back to this table now. And I don't know if there's a lot more things we haven't covered off, but if there's anything else that was raised here in terms of some of the, in terms of any of the processes or any of the priorities coming back to staff, I'll turn to you, Ms. Relid and Ms. Carter. Do you, is there anything you would like to get a bit more clarity on at this point with regards to putting together some plans for the January sessions?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this was a really valuable time to come together. I think it's important that we allow ourselves to have these informal conversations. Really appreciate the input from the gallery. And I think staff has some good information to bring back to you as to how these next steps are going to shake out. So it's about continued improvement and what we can do within our existing capacity. And, yeah, it'll be more conversations to come. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I guess the only other thing I'd just throw out there because some time and some dates are going to have to be worked out with staff as to availability and things. What you've put up there on the screen so far has been sort of alternate Monday nights where we don't have meetings. Is there, but there is, you know, the opportunity as well for us to sit as a group, maybe on a Saturday, and have this same sort of meeting where we're going through some of these things. Is that something that council is at all interested in doing on the weekend, some, one of these times? Is it possible to? I'm putting you on the spot here. Sorry. I'm not going to hold you to it. I just wanted to know if, because that's something else that if it's, if that works, that might actually be another option for us to kind of do a bit of planning pieces. Counselor Zelka?
So some of us have children on council. So as you know, it's always sacred time on the weekends. However, this is important. And in for a penny, in for a pound. So yes, extra meetings would be fine with me. Thank you.
Okay, so just another option there for just sort of trying to tweak out some of the options for getting together. It might be one other option for us to deal with. All right, anything, any other comments before we sign off here? Counselor Braithwaite?
I noticed on the schedule, it says December 10th and December 17th. So are we having a meeting on December 17th? Because I thought that our last meeting was actually December 10th, but it's not now.
Sure. So you're right, December 10th was to be our last meeting. Unfortunately, we still have to get bylaws passed before the end of the year, so that requires two meetings.
So I think in the past, we've done it in the morning, early in the morning or something on the 17th. Is that correct? So would that be something that we're going to do is in the morning of the 17th or later on in the day?
Thank you. Thanks for the question. Counselor Braithwaite, any other questions over here? All right. Thank you very much. Especially everybody in the audience who came out to participate, to listen and to contribute, and the staff for coming out. So with that, a motion to be read out from off of the agenda, if you don't mind. We do have to move in camera briefly. Oh, item two, yeah. Oh, this is really kind of more of a piece for us to kind of have as a discussion. I don't think we're up to this body to make recommendation, but really, there was a suggestion made, an idea to carry forward a previous satisfaction survey. And the question was really, do we want to incorporate something similar to that as part of this? As part of either standalone, as part of a budgeting process, a part of a strategic planning process? I'm not sure if we have to decide that 100% right now, but it was just, it came forward. It was sort of tabled to come to this meeting as part of the consideration for that. Counselor Braithwaite?
I still feel pretty strongly that that's not something that we need to consider based on the fact that we just came through a whole election process. So I would still, if this is going to be put forward as a motion, I would be against the motion that would be putting forward. Or I would like to put forward a motion that we not pursue this. But I'd like to hear other people's comments.
Well, it was just tabled as meeting for a discussion, and it's interesting. We've had this lot of discussion here around public engagement and input and pieces. And I still feel like we're still looking for a few tools to kind of round this out a little bit. I'm not, I think maybe this might still make sense to be kept in the back pocket as a toolkit, unless there's a majority here who feel like this is something we want to move forward with now and the more broader specter, as opposed to taking it back later as more, maybe a bit more targeted. Counselor Zelka? Start with Counselor Nay. Counselor Zelka, then Counselor Nay.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly don't want to take over the microphone. But I, do we, just a question of procedure. Do we need to receive the correspondence that came in? Or is this just considered as already received since it, question of procedure?
Okay.
Okay, okay. So, okay, thank you. So I understand it's okay. So with respect to...
The Deputy Director, for the record, the Deputy Director of Corporate Services said, no, we do not need to. Receive it some separately.
So with respect to this correspondence, I do note that it's almost like the person was sitting here since they basically talked about that we should do what we just ended up doing in terms of coming up with a new approach and possibly, you know, maybe receive, put it to bed, put this suggestion to, of a survey completed to bed, and then possibly reinvigorate it a year or two down the road. And I would be more in alignment with that as well. I certainly wouldn't, I understand there's lots of electronic tools that we would have in our back pocket, and many of them, of course, are mentioned in that task force report. I certainly wouldn't want to keep this alive since I find the suggestion was very expensive. So thank you. I would be voting to kill it. Thank you.
We'll see if we need to get to a vote at this point. Counselor Nay?
We're in the same one, aren't we? Through you, Chair, I just have a question to staff. Given what this is intended to do as described in the executive summary, what would have been the recommended timeline for administering the questionnaire? What did you have in mind?
I'll call Mr. Jones forward here. It's his report. Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the intent of doing the survey at this time was to inform council's strategic plan for the future. So the idea was to go out, ask the public two things. Half of the survey would be, what do you think council should be focusing its resources and time on? And the second would be using some of the same questions we had in the past to try to determine if we've made progress or not on those topics.
Through you, Chair. So what would be the timeline? If we start talking about our strategic planning in January, what was, and we're now in the beginning of December. I was just wondering, how long would this take to do? And when would it go out? And when would we get the results back?
So, Your Worship, now we would be at a point that we would likely have this work conducted end of January, early February, with the results probably the end of February.
So would that then help us to inform the current work we're doing on our strategic priorities, given what we've been talking about tonight?
Your Worship, I'll leave that for council to decide. Thanks.
It's that I think the timelines show that we're meeting in January. Is that right? So, okay. So can I just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it. So we would be out of step with the strategic planning. Would that be right? And I'm just wondering if we did do the survey. Because I would like to have the survey personally. I think it would help inform our decision making. And I don't really think that an election is as nuanced a tool to give us the information we're looking for in this kind of planning, quite frankly. So, but I'm just, I wouldn't want to go forward if it wasn't going to be useful to inform. That's really what I'm asking.
Your Worship. So if we were now intending to conduct our strategic planning exercises in January, this process, the survey, would not be finished. So we would have to talk about different timing. If, in fact, you wanted to use that survey information.
Thank you. So just through you, Chair, one more to staff. What would happen if we shifted the strategic planning by a month, can I ask, I guess, to the CO?
I think part of the work plan we'll be developing is how many sessions for strategic planning we're going to have. Looking at that three-pronged approach, we'll probably have several. One of the things we're going to have to figure out with council is, do you want to have more meetings that are shorter in length? Or do you want longer meetings that are not quite as numerous? So you're going to be still engaged in strategic planning by the end of February, even with the current plan in front of you.
So just one more question about timing here. So were it the case that the council or the committee was interested in going forward with this, then if we were to try to align ourselves with the strategic planning work in January, February through this period, would we would have to give an okay now, like quite quickly, I presume, right? For you to get your ducks in a row?
Yes.
To be clear on process here, if that was the case, this would go as a recommendation to council because this would require a budget approval for 2019, essentially. Is that how this works?
Your Worship, what, in the report, was there a suggestion that this would be paid out of savings from 2018? So it would not be required to be included in the 2019 process.
But it would be required to be approved by council and not by committee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up question, then. Would the committee here make a recommendation to the council? Or would we bring, okay, so it would need to happen here this evening for the next council meeting. Is that right? Okay, so we do, would need a motion at the committee today to see if there was the will here at the committee? So, if I may, so I, okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we, oh, just wait, disappear. I don't know if there was a, there is a motion in there. Recommendation supports council's goal on being managed and governed. So, wait a minute. Oh, here it is. Yeah. So the recommendation that we recommend to council to approve an expenditure of $30,000 for a citizen satisfaction survey. It's motion.
Is there a seconded? I don't have a seconded. So we'll let this one go at this point. I guess there's not much, thank you for the motion. I guess that answers the question then, if we're going to do that as part of this. I will throw it out there. It's still part of our options in terms of community feedback and so forth going forward. And certainly something to maybe consider next year. Counselor Zelka?
I wish to move the alternate motion that the report of the Director of Corporate Services dated November 7, 2018, be received for information.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the report that was put together. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones, for you, Chair. I supported this last week because I thought this was a good forum to bring this item to, for discussion. But I agree that, I guess I was concerned about two things as I thought about this. One was timing, and the other was cost. As well, this council needs the opportunity to find its feet, to undertake the strategic planning process, I think, in a timely fashion. And the staff work plan and develop some practical public engagement activities as part of that process. And I see a survey certainly as a practical engagement tool. But I don't think, I think it's premature for this council and for the community at this point, so thank you.
Thank you. I think that ends our agenda for the day then. So can I have that motion read out, please?
I'll move that in accordance with Section 91.
Did I not call the question? Sorry. You had made the motion to receive. All those in favor, opposed and opposed. Thank you.
I'll move in accordance with Section 91A and E of the Community Charter, that the open portion of the meeting of council be adjourned and that a closed session be convened to discuss personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position of an officer, employee, or agent of the municipality or another position appointed by the municipality in acquisition, disposition, or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers the disclosure would reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed and opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.